Ready?
Okay, we're going live.
It's five o'clock. It's time for the regular scheduled Natchez Parish School Board meeting, January 7th, 2021. We have a number of things to cover tonight. Mr. Garner, can you lead us in the pledge? And Ms. Giedro, can you offer the invitation? And we would like to take a moment of silence to recognize all of the retired and active personnel that worked for the Natchez Parish School Board or have worked for us and we lost in 2020 and up to this date. A moment of silence, please.
Father, thank you for allowing us to be here today to conduct the business of our school system. Lord, as we look back on this last year, we realize what a crucial and critical time it's been for all of us and the effect that it's had on our system. But, Lord, when we look clearly, we can see way more blessings than there are obstacles. We ask that you continue to guide us and help us through this new year as we push forward and continue to grow our district and to make it be what it should be for our children and for our community. Lord, when we fall short of our goals and aspirations and what you expect from us, we ask, humbly ask your forgiveness. Help us through this year in Jesus' name, we pray.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which is sand, one nation, unmerishable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Giedro. Mr. Garner. Ms. Pinkney, can we have a roll call attendance?
Mr. Danzy. Mr. McQuire.
Here.
Mr. Benefield.
Here.
Mr. Garner.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Present.
Ms. Giedro.
Here.
Ms. Willis. Ms. Broadway.
Here.
Mr. McGaskey.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Ms. Phelps.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Board members, please silence your telephones. The members of the public also, please silence your telephones as to not to disrupt the meeting. I want to apologize for the quality of the sound we had Tuesday night's meeting. Staff and some governors, there were some technical difficulties which they've overcome. We should be a lot clearer tonight and much more productive. With that said, as a reminder, board members, please speak directly into the microphone so the members of the public can hear. Members of the audience, if you'd like to comment on any agenda item, please secure a form in the back of the room on the desk and complete it, pass to that agenda item and pass it forward. We have no comments from the public on our website. And Superintendent Eloy, would you like to break into your report?
Yes, sir. I just have a couple of things to add from the other night. The first item is we are monitoring the weather. We will make a call tomorrow afternoon on the weather that we believe will be coming to us late Sunday, early Monday. If, in fact, we do have a weather day on Monday, that will be a virtual day for students and teachers. And what we have informed principals is to make preparations so that when students go home Friday and when teachers go home Friday, that they are prepared to have that virtual day Monday regardless of the weather conditions. We'd also like to, something that was very, very exciting, you know, we've lived with COVID now, you know, we're coming on almost a year and today I had probably the most hopeful discussion I've had in a year concerning COVID-19. I am excited, very excited, to report to you that as of tomorrow at noon, Ms. Linda Page will be submitting the numbers of employees for Natchez Parish School System who will be receiving vaccinations from the Department of Health. Now, as far as a timeline for that, they are not giving us a firm timeline, but there has been quotes of anything from it could happen in the next few weeks to six weeks. Now, all that is contingent upon the manufacturers, but what Dr. White shared with us today is that typically the vaccines are coming faster than they are anticipated. So we are very excited that our employees, those who want to have a vaccination, will have that opportunity very soon. Also, last week, I mentioned some opportunities that we have with NSU, some things that we're doing to bolster our programming with them and our relationship. And there was one that I kind of left off that me and Dr. McAllister and Mr. Lebrun had been talking about that I wanted to wait until today to share with you. And that is what we are looking to do, and this is something that I think will be beneficial for our partnership with NSU, but will also help us economically speaking. And that is, as many of you are aware, we posted the middle lab position about six months ago, and that position never came to fruition because the gentleman who decided to accept the position had a change of heart. And so what we've been doing is Mr. Lebrun has been filling both spaces. In talks with Dr. McAllister, she's been looking at a few different models of different lab schools around the state and the nation. And there's many other lab schools that basically have a directorship with some principals or other leaders underneath that. And so what she's proposed is a pilot program for this spring because we know we don't want to hire a principal at this moment anyways because it's just not a good time between COVID and the time of the year to hire a new principal, to get someone that we really think the lab school deserves. So what she's proposed is to make, for the spring semester, to make Karen Coleman the, what she would term, and it's not a change of title for us, but over both schools, the E-Lab and M-Lab, which if any of you know the history of the district, that was how the lab school started out. And if you look at the number of students both of those schools have, it's in line with her supervision that she would be able to supervise both schools. Also, if you recall, during the summer, we did go from two principals to one principal at LP-Von, so it's in line with that same thinking. And it would save us the cost of a principal position. Now, many of you are sitting there saying, well, the difference between LP-Von and the lab schools is that they are geographically more separated than LP-Von is, obviously. So what we would do is Ms. Coleman would still be domiciled at E-Lab. Mr. Lebrun would be able to start his position here at the district. And we would have a teacher who has leadership experiences and credentials would be serving in dual capacities. We have not highlighted who that person is yet. We still have about two or three weeks to be able to identify that. But instead of doing, they would get some more experience in a position similar to an assistant principal, but it would add no cost to the district. And any extra cost there would be would be absorbed by NSU as part of this pilot program. We're very excited about it. If it does not go the way we want it to, we can easily pivot back and Mr. Lebrun can take back over in that situation, but he's also going to spend some time over there. And if it does work, it's something we can look at to continue in perpetuity, but it's something that we're interested in doing because as a true lab school, lab schools are supposed to be places that you conduct action research. So if we are a true lab school, if we are truly looking to be what that is, then this is the exact type of program that we would be looking to do. So I can answer any questions about that. I'm sure many of you may have some, but I'm open to those. And then also, I'm going to have a large bit of time to talk to you all about the additional minutes that I know many people are anxious to hear about, but that'll be an agenda item later in the night. So any questions regarding those three items?
I have a question, Dr. Eloy. Would there be any change in pay for the principal during that pilot program time?
Yes, ma'am. There would be, but that, because we do not want to, we're not trying to change a position title or anything like that, that amount would be contributed by NSU from Dr. McAllister and her program.
Dr. Eloy, are you asking the board to approve these changes?
For that change, we're not doing any sort of personnel changes. We're basically asking for Ms. Coleman to take on extra responsibility. So there would be no reason to bring it before the board necessarily because no one's job, position, or title would be changing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And on the weather day, if that should happen on Monday?
Yes, ma'am.
Will that be announced Monday morning or?
No, ma'am. We're going to make an announcement tomorrow in line with Sabine Parish and also with NSU and CLTCC.
And just assume that that will be a weather day and a virtual day?
Yes, ma'am. Teachers and students will know before they leave to go home tomorrow if that will be a weather day or not.
And are all students getting the iPads to take home?
Yes, ma'am. The only students we're not sending iPads home with are the pre-K students, but they should have work that they can complete independent of the iPads. But all principals were told today to make sure that all iPads were ready to go home.
Will there be another day that they will be required to make up since this is a weather day?
No.
No, ma'am. Would it be a virtual day? That counts the same as a regular face-to-face day.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Dr. Eloy, are you complete with your report?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I thought y'all were, I was waiting on y'all and y'all waited on me.
Okay, any old business. We've got a couple of items on new business and we'll take that bottom item first before we move into the election of officers for this year. Mr. Wascom, can you read that announcement of public meeting again at our formal meeting tonight?
Let me find it here. Hang on. Last page, I'm sure. I'm sure it's the last page. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Announcement of public meeting. Notice is here by a given that it is meeting to be held on Thursday, February 4th, 2021, at 5:00 PM at its regular meeting place, the Parish School Board Office, Board Room, 310 Royal Street, Natchez, Louisiana. The Parish School Board of the Parish of Natchez, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling elections to be held in Consolidated District Number Eight of the Parish of Natchez, State of Louisiana, and Consolidated District Number Ten of the Parish of Natchez, State of Louisiana, to authorize renewal of available taxes therein. So also, Mr. Brennan Black is here from Foley. He is willing to field any call, I mean, any questions that y'all might have regarding this, particularly as to do the possible timings of these elections. He's willing to, he's here, he's willing to come forward if y'all would like to talk to him. Is this the appropriate time to do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is anybody here would like to? One of the things I need to clarify from my last meeting was, we only have, we can have the election April, and if it fails, then we can redo it in November. If we choose to wait until October of next year, then we can do it in April of 2022. So basically, that's our timing. So if at any point in time it doesn't pass and we want to try it again, we have a six-month lockout, which is, I was giving y'all a whole bunch of dates last time when I was wrong because I didn't know about the six-month lockout.
Well, we don't have to set that date tonight, do we?
We do not.
That's good.
Did y'all want, did y'all want him to? He's up here from New Orleans. I thought we'd give him the moment.
And all of these are renewals, right?
These are renewals.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Brennan Black with Foley. You know, as Lee mentioned, renewing taxes for School District Eight and School District Ten, which are expiring this year. Obviously, the intent being that we have an election, get in on the tax roll for '22 at the very latest so there's no interruption in collections. In order to do that, you at the very least need to have it approved by one of these spring elections next year in 2022. Also, as Lee mentioned, if the measure fails, there is a six-month lockout. So given the timing of the election dates for '21 and '22, if you call this election at your meeting next month for April and it fails, you have to come back in November at the earliest. If you started in October of this year, you could come back in April and again have it levy on the '22 tax roll. So essentially, regardless of your options, two bites at the apple, so to speak. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. As Mr. Benefield stated, you don't have to make a decision today. That's something to consider. We will have a resolution on your agenda next month. You can choose not to adopt that resolution and you can hold off and wait until October if that is your preference.
Board members, do we have any questions from Mr. Black?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Before we open the floor up for nominations for officers of the Natchez Parish School Board for the year 2021, I'd like to say a few things. And I'd like to thank all the board members for supporting me this past year as president. I don't think any board, especially any board president, has experienced the challenges in 2020, that year presented. Some of the things were global pandemic, selecting a new superintendent, almost four months without a superintendent, a feeding program that started, PALS stopped and restarted, and then guidance from Bessie that changed, seemed to be every day. As president, I announced some goals for 2020, the first year for the board and for me personally, and it seems that we've accomplished all of those. Of course, we're all on the same page, exceeding a good superintendent, and I think he is and the staff exceeded all of our expectations. I think we're really excited where we are. Create a committee to monitor our assets and facilities to prevent another Clutch Bill from ever happening. We established that committee chaired by Mr. Danzy, and with the addition of Mr. Wascom, we're prepared to preserve all of our assets. Mr. Wascom seemed like a bulldozer on the job, so that was accomplished. Expand the dual enrollment process to offer associate degrees for seniors in Natchez Parish on graduation because of the good work of Superintendent Miss Pinkney and others within the staff and NSU, the joint partnership. There'll be an announcement coming very soon that that's going to occur because of the good work in 2020. Another was to reduce the number of uncertified teachers. When this board took office in January of 2019, we had 104 uncertified teachers in the classroom. Again, due to the goals and the incredible work of our superintendent staff, we now have 35 who are not in a certification program. So this is a significant reduction. Superintendent and staff, actually, you heard Tuesday night, have taken not one, but two steps further for the incentive program and paying for past practice testing as well as establishing the Teach-Natchez pipeline for new teachers. And again, we talk about exceeding expectations and the superintendent and the staff have done that, and of course, we've accomplished that goal. Also, create a committee to petition the parish chaired by Mr. Garner to find ways to fund road repairs in Natchez Parish. This information was presented to the parish on December 21st by Mr. Harris and myself. As a matter of fact, we even had, in the Natchez Journal yesterday, one of the fire districts was commenting on how much it slowed their response down, the road condition. So it's, they're still ongoing, there's still people that are very, very interested. This was not to criticize the parish, but to partner with them for us to find funding. I mean, we're handing money out from the federal government overseas, and maybe we can get some of the good people of Natchez Parish. All these goals were met, very, very timely, good goals strongly met. When Superintendent first came on the board, I explained these goals, and he was 100% on board. In fact, I asked him this week to put a list of things he felt we accomplished as a board, the goals that we accomplished and the things that we accomplished in 2020. His was, of course, I guess he was bragging on himself, hiring, the hiring process of a new superintendent, hiring a new and very effective food service director, hiring an extremely effective business director. District One has become one-to-one with technology. Again, that's great for us. Manage and successfully navigate the COVID-19 process. Of course, Ms. Page had a huge hand in that. Reduce the number of uncertified teachers, creation of a practice support pipeline for teachers, we talked about. And under the board's leadership, the relationship and circus with Echo Ryan has vastly improved, and we thank Mr. Ryan for that also. Dual enrollment, associate degrees in the process being finalized very quickly, and the relationship with NSU just continues to grow. And of course, the last one here, they worked on it and it was announced with the Gold On the Fiber Cable Project. And so, board members, we all should be proud of the work that, and for everyone who's involved, and that means superintendent, staff, contractors, and even us, for what we've done, and we need to celebrate our successes. I think we've done a great job in 2020. And I don't think, I don't think any of us can look over our shoulder and wonder what we've been doing in the last year, and we've been very, very successful. And I can tell you, members of the public are actually commenting on that. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for any comments concerned with year 2020.
I'd like to start, Mr. Benefield, if I may. I've never been, I've been on this board, this is my seventh year. I've never been more proud of this board than I am today. It feels good when you're in the public to hear good comments made of how proud they are of us and what we've accomplished over the last several years. So this is not a stopping point since we're just fixing to change presidents and all. We just want somebody, whoever gets it, you know, to pick up where we left off and let's move forward. And Mr. Benefield, for your part, I think you've done a good job considering everything that's been going on through 2020, and you've done an excellent job on all that. And whoever takes your place, we want us to pick up and move forward. It just, it thrills me when I hear the public comment and make comments like that, that they are proud of what we're doing. And my sidekick here, Ms. Palmer, I couldn't make it, I mean, I couldn't make it without her. She keeps me straight. I do appreciate her, too. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Garner.
Mr. Benefield, I want to thank you and Reverend Harris and y'all's positions. You know, coming into this position six months ago, or I'm sorry, eight months ago, and everyone told me all these stories about, oh, the board meeting this, the board meeting that, and I can't tell you how wrong all that was and how professional and how productive this board is and how supportive how all of you have been. So I just, I was talking to a few board members earlier tonight before the meeting, and I just can't, can't wait for what this next year has in store with us, and especially if we can have a year with less COVID. I think the sky's the limit. So thank you all of y'all for all your support, and I look forward to these new president, new vice president. It's going to be fun.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Eloy. Any other comments?
Yes. I want to say to Mr. Benefield, as we talked several times when he first took over, and I told him, couldn't be a better person than had everything that it took to get the job done. And having a skin like elephant skin and like a duck, that stuff that folks say, let it roll off, and that's what you've done. And I can say to you, as I would tell any of my members who does well, job well done as the president in such a time as we have experienced, unprecedented time of COVID, a new superintendent, and I'm telling you, that was, in and of itself, something to behold and look at, the process, and dealing with the outside as well as us on the inside. I want to say again, well done.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. I asked the superintendent about that, and he mentioned East Bad Ruth Parish took a year and seats their superintendent, and he lasted three months and resigned.
I saw that.
We did it in just a few months. We found the right person. We're building an all-star team here in Natchez Parish, and we've got nothing but the sake of the sky's the limit. Anyone else?
I'd like to say thank you to you, Mr. Benefield. You have done an extremely good job keeping us all together, keeping us focused. Having been president prior to your term, I know what a difficult job that is, and it's, sometimes I'm dawning, I mean, it's just overwhelming at times, and you've kept us in line and kept us going forward. And whoever leads this board through this next year, I hope they can pick up these big shoes, Phil, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Giedro. Well, I don't think as a board, we've ever progressed so far so fast. I mean, we've done, it's amazing what, just right out of the chute. And again, thank you to all board members. You've made this happen. This was not one, or this was a whole group. Anyone else? At this time, I'd like to open up the nominations for the President of Natchez Parish School Board for the year 2021. Do I hear any names?
I nominate Reverend Stephen Harris.
Second.
We have a nomination of Mr. Stephen Harris and a second by Mrs. Palmer, nominated by Mr. Emile McQuire. Are there any other nominations for the president's position? Ms. Pinkney, can we have a roll call vote to ratify the president of Natchez Parish School Board for the year 2021?
Mr. Danzy. Ms. McQuire.
Yes.
Mr. Benefield.
Yes.
Mr. Garner.
Yes.
Reverend Harris.
You can't. You matter because we don't have eight here.
Ms. Giedro.
Yes.
Ms. Willis. Ms. Broadway.
Yes.
Ms. McGaskey.
Yes.
Ms. Palmer.
Yes.
And Ms. Phelps.
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Harris. We have a new president of Natchez Parish School Board.
You have to take your name, please.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Reverend.
All right, I said what I had to say about Mr. Benefield. I'll say what I would say about myself, is that I just want to add on to the success that we've had, and I know that we can't do it without all of you participating in it. And I know Mr. Benefield will make this transition easy, as well as the former president, Ms. Giedro, and all of you. So I say thank you all for your vote of confidence, and whatever it is that we need to do, we'll do it together, and we'll be able to say the best is yet to come. All right? And with that being said, I think that we are at the point of, the floor is open for nominations for Vice President of the Natchez Parish School Board.
I nominate Mrs. Rita Phelps.
Seven.
There's been motion by Mr. My brother. Emile McQuire. There's been motion by Mr. My brother, Emile Matwire, Emile Matwire, and motion second by Ms. Dorothy McGasky, that Ms. Reba Phelps be our Vice President. Is there any other nomination? All right, seeing there's no other nomination, by acclamation, she has the seat of the Vice President, unless we're going to ratify it by vote, but we can do also by acclamation. So we can.
Does it vote for ourselves?
Yeah, she can. So they want to ratify it by motion, by vote, so all those in favor of Ms. Reba Phelps becoming the Vice President, or we might roll call.
Mr. Vansy?
Yes.
Mr. Matwire?
Yes.
Mr. Benefield?
Yes.
Mr. Garner?
Yes.
Reverend Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Giedro?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Ms. Broadway?
Yes.
Ms. McGasky?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes.
And Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Right, it's official that Ms. Reba Phelps is our Vice President.
Uh, Mrs. Harris, before you continue on with the agenda, I just wanted to recognize your effort last year for Vice President, and, and doing the things that you did, filling in, and making things happen. Again, a lot of people don't realize the role of that Vice President, how important it is. I just want to thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Benefield. You all have perused and looked over at that.
I got to look at the election. You know, we did the election, I just have my personal feeling that the president needs to be sitting next to the superintendent. That's the way it's always been, they've always sat on the left side as a superintendent. I think the president needs to be at the head of the table, not on the side of the table. I know it's high-governed field with most boards, the president, we ask the president, and vice, but she won't do that, but I think they need to be sitting next to the superintendent when they're dealing with business, that's the way it's always been, and that's the business I feel. If y'all are on it, that's fine, if he's on, if Harris wants to sit where he's at, that's fine with me, but I just, I think it's more professional just the president is sitting at the head of the podium.
Okay, do it for the next.
In years past, we, the president sat at that right corner. Is that a problem, to sit right there?
They don't even give the way of it?
Yeah.
I do think the president should be at the head of the table, just for the media, the public, the aesthetics of the room, and the respect of the room. Now, the Vice President, I love my seat, and I would miss a meal dearly if I didn't.
I would rather you close it.
Well, once I could take the meal with me.
But Reverend Harris, if you want to go to that corner, it's, it's, that's sound like a deal, or however you want to.
Well, and I think we're also used to saying this is the way it's been done in the past. Is that traditionally where it should be, the middle, near on the corner, or?
If you can, where Mr. Deepo, or the, the, which is your.
All right, we'll, you can take care of it.
Wait on this thing.
Yeah, take care of it, maybe, bro. You all have, perused the consent agenda, paying folks attention to the E-rate, category two, or anything like that. With that being said, we're going to look to.
Have a motion on that, Mr. Harris.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. Garner.
We got to approve the.
Consent agenda, that's what.
Oh, you're kind of just holding on to E, E thing.
You can talk about it one night, it's only presented.
Yes.
I second it.
Okay, then second by Mr. Matwire, we accept the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. I would ask that Mr. Benefield would do Mr. Russ Dancy's chairperson quite quick, as we get ready to move into that business, financial, facilities, services, and insurance report.
Thank you. Take pro production on bids, we don't have any bids other than what Mr. Wascom just allowed us to advertise. Transportation report was received successfully from Mr. Matthews and Mr. Ryan. Anything to add?
Nope.
Sounds great. And we have the tax commission report. Mr. Wascom, any, any additions to that?
No, sir, it's pretty, pretty simple. Everything's looking good, stable, still going up over last year. The biggest months to be concerned about is how did November and December happen? And so we'll know that in the next few months, and, and those are your big months.
Okay. We've also received a budget update, any changes?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions, that board member? And we received the school force, food service report from Ms. Hicks, and all, all of this is looking very good. I'd like to offer items two through six, as a motion.
It's been offered by Mr. Benefield.
Seven.
Second by Mr. Matwire, that we accept all of those reports coming from, from one or from two, six. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Ayes have it.
I'm seven. Consider approving the distribution of one-time MFP appropriation, $583 for certified personnel, $300 for the support personnel, and Mr. Wascom mentioned that too tonight. Anything not added, that just.
This is exactly the same verbiage as this time last year, and just want to make sure we get it to people in time.
Like, one of that, like, one time.
Okay, we need to take a.
A bunch of.
Yeah.
I'll second that multiple thing.
Okay, it's been offered by Mr. Matwire, second by Mr. Garner. Any questions, any comments? You can go ahead and make your comment.
I was just asking about.
The guarantee is definitely by the February payroll. We are, well, we're gonna try to get it out even in January, but we're guaranteeing it'll be out by February.
This is an increase, an appropriation, I think we need a roll call vote.
That's what I was gonna suggest, a roll call, anything, getting the money on the roll call, roll call.
Mr. Vansy?
Yes.
Mr. Benefield?
Yes.
Mr. Garner?
Yes.
Reverend Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Giedro?
Yes.
Ms. Broadway?
Yes.
Ms. McGasky?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Yes.
Janada, seven passes.
Mr. Harris, that concludes the finance, facilities, services, and insurance report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Benefield. Personnel report, Ms. Page.
That was huge, the decision, that's it? Can we guess, um, is it possible to get like a job description of the profit number? Like, is that a benefit formative system?
Yes, no?
Well, I just want to, I don't know about everybody.
Yes.
Reverend Harris, I'll offer that, the simple dispatch report. All right, it's been motion by Mr. Garner.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Garner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. Janada number two on personnel.
This was a position, I've given y'all a job description, laid out. Basically, this person will help out as a payroll assistant and benefits manager.
Our agenda says manager, our, we, job description says coordinator.
We, we have adjusted it to a coordinator.
Yes, sir, but we need, we're voting on items as manager, so we need to change that on the agenda somehow, prior voting on it.
The question I had was, is this, because we, we need a motion before we can discussion, discuss it.
That's correct. We, we talked about that at the end of the meeting last week, I just wanted.
Right, right, right. So, before we begin to discuss it.
Yes.
Because I didn't know whether we were voting on it to actually approve it, or was it just being introduced? So if it's to be approved tonight, then we do need to make sure that the wording is right.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow you all as best I can, but are y'all saying on the agenda, it's misworded on the most recent agenda?
Yes, it is. We have.
The most recent agenda that this rebel sent to me, it says benefits manager, payroll assistant, and that's incorrect?
Well, I, I adjusted the name to benefits coordinator and payroll assistant.
I understand. Just trying to follow you on.
So is it benefit manager?
Well, we, based on Mr. Benefield's caution with it at the last meeting, I decided to change it. I did not convey this to Kneeka, but I would like to change it to benefits coordinator and payroll assistant.
Okay, okay.
So basically, he's taking all, I mean, he, she taking all of the.
Let's go ahead and get a motion on that.
We'll discuss it.
I second.
Okay, it's been motion by Mr. Garner, and second by Ms. Phelps. Any questions, any comments?
I was just asking, was the person gonna alleviate all the.
Payroll?
Duty, no, the benefits from Miss, from Mrs. Nolly? Like, she's not gonna have to do that?
No, ma'am, it's, it's, Mr. Chad Harris is, okay, so for instance, on here it says wage verification, it's a lot of phone calls. The main thing is, we have Carol Johnson bogged down in initiating payroll runs and making sure it's all correct, and then you get, in the midst of trying to do that, you get a ton of a lot of phone calls about making sure that the benefits that are, that have been reported are accurately on their payroll. And when you talk about 600 and, what, something like 670 employees and plus some contractors, it's, it's a lot to manage. And you just got to make sure, like, for instance, if they have, typically, the medical is done pretty easily, but it's all of what we call through the First Financial, all the, we have as many as 30 vendors that we deal with, and making sure that each person has each of that correct. Also, we need to have somebody in charge of enrollment once a year, that goes to the schools with the First Financial, and puts on a seminar, where everybody comes through and make sure what the cafeteria plan, what I'm talking about particularly. If they choose to decline it, we have to have a form filled out. We have to get all this nailed down very specifically. This is a lot of management. So this is a little piece of what Ms. Nolly does, some of what Chad Harris does, some of what Carol does, and also time to get all this paperwork filed properly, go online. If somebody, often what happens, we get a lot of calls where somebody has taken on a cafeteria plan, and then later in the year has chosen to, to have it taken off. And then we're, we're just, we need somebody to keep up with this, because it can be very irritating when you make a call to our office and it's not being handled, because it, it is a lot of overwhelming amount of effort that we have to put out to make sure everything is exactly correct. And our numbers that we, when we do a payroll run, which is quite large, it's like $3 million every time we do a payroll run. The amount of money that, we have to make sure that the amount of money we're withholding matches a report where we're sending it in, it's a lot. We talk about 663 people, and some people have multiple entries, and they have multiple companies they're, they're dealing with. It's a lot of detailed effort that we, we need help with.
And Mr. Wascom and I have had numerous conversations about, we want to utilize the people we have to the best extent possible, but we also want to be mindful that there is a diminishing return on what individuals can accomplish and accomplish effectively consistently. And I think when we talk about providing the best for our students, or in this case, the best for our staff, this will be something that will improve the product for our teachers and staff, because this is an area, you know, it's not to blame any individual or any department, but it's an area that many of our teachers and staff have had issues with, and it's really because they are understaffed in that area, and I think this will greatly improve the product that Mr. Wascom and his team are able to put out.
Working for Nagus Parish School Board is not just about the money, it's about the experience. And if they're having a, a bad experience working and getting their money, and they're upset with how we handle things, it impacts their quality of life living here. And so this is an attempt to get the necessary help in place, so we can settle these issues. If you'll notice on bullet point, third up from the bottom, lead person in communication with all district employees in their problems with handling of their payroll. So if you see the, so when Ms. Fob gets a call, it can go straight to this person, she'll dispense it to Carol, or to Chad, or to Michael Milner, wherever it needs to go in order to resolve the issue. We, we know that it gives attention to make sure that everything is correct. Also, in the event that, we're gonna cross train, start a process around here, cross training, so if somebody's ill or sick or gone, we, we have that covered. That's what this is.
What's the power of that?
Well, it depends on college, or maybe trade school, it's somewhere between 25 and 35,000. And it is a full-time, 12-month employee.
And they would make an assistant, Ms. Nolly?
Excuse me now?
They would be making assistant, Ms. Nolly, and.
Well, Ms. Nolly's in, in, in human resources. The idea here is to make a stronger connection between Ms. Nolly's efforts. I want, particularly when you become online as a new employee, I want to make sure it's connected so that their first payroll, their first experience of us is a good one, and everything is connected. I just don't want the fact that we're bogged down in a payroll run, and we don't get all the, don't get everything, this really is important with the quality of experience that people have when they come to Nagus Parish School Board system. If they're always like, oh, my payin' right, well, this didn't happen, we don't. Now, sometimes it's not all our fault here. It has to do with paperwork hasn't been filled out, or we haven't gotten information from First Financial, or, or Blue Cross, or wherever. So there are a lot of different reasons, but we need somebody to stay on it to make sure there's follow-through.
And the max would be 35,000?
As I see it at this time. Well, there'll be plus experience issues, experience, but yes, that's where I, that was my estimate.
Okay, but this is major duties.
Yes, I, I, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
The president, I, I would like to entertain the board's presence and amend that motion if we can to change the agenda item and the position from the benefits manager, payroll assistant, to benefits coordinator and payroll assistant.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a motion to do that.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Mr. Benefield, and second by Mr. Eugene, that we would amend the motion to clarify, to make it a benefit coordinator and payroll assistant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and let's get, let's get a roll call.
Mr. Matwire?
Yes.
Mr. Benefield?
Yes.
Mr. Garner?
Yes.
Reverend Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Giedro?
Yes.
Ms. Broadway?
Yes.
Ms. McGasky?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes.
Yes.
We have like, in that, in that fashion.
Motion passed, yeah. All right.
Now. Now, um, Mr. Harris, um, we, uh, for clarity's sake, we amended it, but we did not establish the position.
Did not establish?
The position, we need to go back and establish the position now. We changed the name only.
Okay.
That's why I was gonna clarify.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the position is, what the?
The the coordinator, we just changed, that pass just was to change the name.
Okay.
From business manager to business coordinator.
Okay.
Now we need to, um, a a vote on the actual position.
Well, there was already a motion on the floor that Eugene.
That was the, what was the floor to change it?
No, no.
To discuss.
Because I seconded the.
Yeah.
I seconded Eugene's original motion, which was considering.
And we were just clarifying it to to be, uh, benefit coordinator and payroll assistant, right?
Correct.
Okay, so now we need to.
Yeah, I'll offer a motion to establish this position.
But there was already a motion on the floor before we amended the position, so did we?
Need to establish the position too, because the position I thought was already established.
No, wait, no, it it hasn't happened, we, what we did was, we changed the name, and then now we have to establish the position.
Yes, well, yeah, that's another position too, there, okay. All right, um, let's, um, get a motion, you all ready to, um, motion?
I'm all for the motion, yes, sir.
Eugene, second?
I'll second.
All right, um, let's have a roll call on that.
Ms. McQuire?
Yes.
Mr. Benefield?
Yes.
Mr. Garner?
Yes.
Bert Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Giedro?
Yes.
Ms. Broadway?
Yes.
Ms. McGarkey?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer?
Yes.
And Ms. Phil?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right.
Thank you all very much.
Um. Executive report, please, um, Phil.
Okay, item number one, consider approving NPSB strategic plan, Superintendent Lieutenant Eliot.
So, uh, like I said, we we've spoken about this a lot, uh, it is a living document, so it can be amended, it can be changed. Um, and we still have to, uh, meet as a staff about the timeline of different things, or who has responsibility of certain items. But the meat and potatoes of the strategic plan are there, I think they're strong. And I believe that, uh, if we follow that plan, uh, with fidelity, that within the next five years, we can see a massive improvement in this district.
Can I get, uh, a pen off of?
I'll open.
Okay, and open by Mr. McQuire, and seconded by Ms. Broadway, um, any more discussion? Let me just have my discussion. When I look at this plan and look over it, uh, let me tell you something. It's the first time that I've been, um, on this board, that we had a person that actually bought a vision. And that 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 that, uh, strategic plan is a vision to me, that the board has something that we can work with him on. Uh, so, I I'm I'm very proud of it, and, um, you know, whatever we can do to help it come to pass. I I hope that all of us, all eleven of us, will be, uh, all hands on deck. With that being said, uh, uh, are you all ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Ayes in the aisle passes.
Item number two, receiving update on Natchez Central parking lot repair and parking lot lighting. Ms. Broadway?
Yes.
Back to me. We have filled in some of the big holes. We're working with the new product I brought up in our last meeting about aqua fault. And we are hoping that this will work for not only just this parking lot, but all, all of our campuses. Ms. Broadway clarified what there are dark spots that have never had any lighting in our parking. That will have to be something we look at and engineer to get done. I'm hoping if there's any money left over in the current bond, because we're coming to the end of the spending of that money. If there's any left over, I can, I would like to try to work that in there. The front of Natchez Central is, the lighting for the up-down lights has already been built in. So that'll help somewhat. But agreed, there are dark spots that need to be fixed.
And I would just like to reiterate what you, going back to what you said Tuesday about the guarantee on this new product to fill in the potholes. You said, is it 10 or?
10 years, I think it's a 10, I believe it to be a 10-year guarantee. Yeah, that's what I want to make sure is happening.
I think, I'm hoping, yeah, that hopefully it's kind of some peace of mind because I know we patched it in the past and.
Yes.
Hoping this product will live up to its name.
Yes.
Or promise rather. All right, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Ms. Broadway.
Item number three, consider approving resolution declaring the week of January 17th a week of service. As per.
All right, hopefully most of y'all have this in your packet. You looked over it and there's no, nothing that we need to take out and add to. Mr. Dr. E. Moyn and his representative looked over it. And we, my partner, in partnering with this, if she could just read it.
Yes, excellent. Whereas the Natchez Parish School District envisions excellence and equity for all. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. also dreamed of an outstanding education for all children. And whereas Dr. King believed education transmitted the accumulated knowledge of the human race as well as the accumulated experience of social living. And whereas Dr. King dedicated his life to justice, equality, and service for the greater good. And whereas the principles, oratory, and achievements of Dr. King are worthy of emulation. And whereas the third Monday in January, a national holiday since 1983, has been, become known as the day of service by which to honor Dr. King's legacy. Whereas a day of service empowers individuals, strengthens communities, bridges barriers, creates solutions to, to social problems, and moves us closer to Dr. King's vision of a beloved community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Natchez Parish School Board honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by proclaiming the week of January 17th, 2021 as a time for teachers and students to conduct special studies of Dr. King's life and achievements and to safely engage in the service of activities through the Natchez Parish School District, virtually or in person while maintaining social distancing, the wearing of masks, and adhering to any CDC guidelines and recommendations.
Can I get a motion on the floor?
I'll open.
I'll second.
And a motion by Mr. McQuire and second by Ms. Broadway. Any further discussions about it?
Just like you say, thank you for taking the time to do that. And the time and effort you poured into it was a great reminder to all of us for Dr. King.
Thank you so very much.
In reference to the day of service, I think there are some activities that are planned in the community. And it might possibly be a situation where they're doing some cleaning, litter pickup, things of that nature throughout the community. I know the city is working on, because I'm, let me say, we have a beautiful city council within the, the city government. And I know that they're working on a project to do cleaning on a, it'll be done like on a quarterly basis. And it might be something specifically planned for that day by the city. And so I'll check with the mayor on that and bring that information to the board. We can pass it on by text or whatever. And so that would invite some of the students and teachers to participate.
Any other comment? Ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Item number four, consider approving calendar amendments for loss of minutes due to hurricanes, Superintendent E. Moyn.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As, as y'all are aware, BESI requires 63,720 minutes for all students throughout the year. There was a little bit of confusion last year. Obviously, we did not reach that 63,720 minutes. And BESI did in fact give waivers. Although we had a state emergency and obviously everyone is aware of the damage that Hurricane Laura and Hurricane Delta dealt this parish, this, this state, specifically BESI, is not offering any sort of waivers this year. The other issue is that the previous calendar, school calendar that we are currently in, but the previous year when that was voted on, there was, there was very little weather days, if any, for most of the schools built in. So what we did is we put out that survey and we gave three different options. We basically asked, would you like us to add days to the end of the year? Would you like us to add minutes? Or would you like us to take away some of the holidays? The overwhelming majorities both agreed that they did not want to add five days to the end of the school year. It was very closely split between adding minutes to the day and adding, or taking away some of the holidays. I also want to thank Ms. Julie Wright and Ms. Felicia Pinkney because they worked tirelessly over the past few days with the schools and were able with the principals to get with them and realize that the vast majority, y'all should have a document at your, at your disposal. Each school has a different start and end time, meaning that they have a different number of total minutes and then they also have a different number of instructional minutes. Because just to explain a little bit more, we technically do not have a number of school days we have to attend. We have a number of minutes we have to adhere to. And obviously then we parcel out those minutes based on the number of days. But if you look at your document, 11 schools will be okay barring any unforeseen circumstances due to other weather events or anything like that. There are three schools that will have to make adjustments. What we've done is we, we told them that, you know, this is where the survey is at. This is what people are asking for. Based on the, the survey and what the people are asking for, what are you able to do and work with us? Each principal was able to, to look at this and work within those confines and make things work. If you look at Lakeview, Lakeview was going to be short some minutes. So what they are able to do is turn President's Day into a virtual instruction day. And what that means is, is that the students will not be at school and teachers will also, we are giving them the option because we know this is a crazy year and we do not want to burden them more with taking away their holiday completely. But we are going to allow them to also be virtual from home as well. So we're hoping that will, will be something that they appreciate. We also, for everyone, as part of this plan, would take away the, the face-to-face parent-teacher conference, which part of that is a student half-day. That is not just because of this situation. It helps us in this situation, but it's also due to the fact that having virtual parent-teacher conferences is just the smarter thing to do when it comes to the COVID pandemic. If you look down, we also had, ELAB had a similar issue. And what they're able to do is they are just, they are not adding any time to their day. They're just gonna, I'm sorry, they are going to start five minutes earlier. But the majority of the students are already there by that 7:45, so they're not starting at 7:50. They're starting at 7:45. And they're going to slightly reduce their lunch and recess by 10 minutes. And those two things alone will get them the time they need to fulfill the 63,000 minutes. And then finally, Natchez Central, they had a little bit tougher time, specifically because they lost instructional minutes due to all of their COVID safety precautions. Now, what they've done, what they've decided to do, we spoke to Mr. Gordy today. What they've decided to do is, it says add 25 minutes, but they're actually not going to add 25 minutes to the day. They're actually going to be able to find 25 minutes of instructional time. So take a minute here, a minute there from the, from the in-between class period, maybe a minute off lunch here, there, and yonder. And they'll be able to make up 25 minutes of instructional time in the day that's already there. And then we are leaving it up to Mr. Gordy and his staff to decide which two holidays, whether it's Memorial Day, President's Day, or the Monday after Easter, which two days they would like to turn into virtual days, again, giving them the ability for their entire staff to make that virtual day from home. So the other side of this is we're also having to push the end of the first term for the entire district to the 29th. Because you have to realize that 63,000 minutes, especially for a, for a district that has, that has blocked scheduling, you have to make that 63,000 minutes in the first term and in the second term. So making these changes and what we're doing Monday, which by the way, NSU, while we're having this meeting, NSU has called classes, so we will probably be making that same call early tomorrow morning. But making Monday a virtual day as well should help us not to accumulate any more weather days. And this will take care of all the issues that arose from the hurricane. Any questions in regards to that plan?
I don't have a question. I just have a statement. I would like to publicly apologize to all the parents who blew my phone up because I did a very poor job of explaining it to the parents. And I didn't know that not every school was affected, so that's great news.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I would say too that I myself could have done probably a better job explaining it and it's a lesson to myself. But I am happy that we are probably able to report better news than people expected. So that's a positive.
Well, I do applaud the district for getting that survey out so quickly. That was an amazing job. And I would also like to apologize because I also told parents we weren't talking about it till February. So I had a very awful understanding and I'm so sorry, publicly sorry.
Well, and let me just say this too. This will never occur again because as we are now producing next year's calendar, it will be a calendar that has built-in insurance concerning weather days. So even if we have, you know, a storm such as Laura or Delta, we will be prepared for that and it won't be an issue next year.
Comment?
Yes.
Dr. E. Moyn, thank you. We did establish a calendar last year that had no weather days and we ended up with a holiday that we, we lost also. But one of the things, when Dr. E. Moyn and I talked earlier, there were some people that were upset that they did not see the survey prior or the information prior. And Dr. E. Moyn, did you break into that as to how important you thought that was for everyone?
Yes, sir. So first off, we have been talking, I shared with y'all the fact that we are constantly talking at the district level about how we can better communicate. In a district of any size, in an organization of any size, I think every time anyone has any sort of legitimate complaint, it's usually going to be centered around communication. And what we want to do is, first, we always want to communicate first with our, our principals because they are the ones on the front lines. And then our expectation from them is that they then communicate what we've communicated with them to their staff. And, and we're going to help them in that effort and we're going to do a better job of communicating with them. The next group is going to, is going to be parents, obviously. There is sometimes a situation where everyone has to know something at the same time. There's circumstances where sometimes teachers have to know before parents. And sometimes, you know, it, it just depends on the circumstance. In this specific circumstance, because we're talking about a calendar, when I look at a calendar, I feel as though that's a, an agreement, almost a legally binding agreement between us and the community, whether it's the teachers, the principals, or the, the people who send their children to school and the students. When we make any change from that, that needs to have input from all parties involved, whether it's the, the parents or the teachers or the staff or the principal. Everyone needs to have a voice in that. And that's why that survey went out to everyone. It was in no way meant to, to give disrespect. I hope that we are showing that we always want input and we will use that input to help our decision-making. But there are times that we will have to involve everyone. But I do agree with the sentiment that we need to make sure that we are always communicated in the most effective and also the most respectful manner to all parties involved.
All right, let me say this. I got nothing but great reviews concerning how we communicated this changing of the calendar in which I commend everyone that played a vital part in getting it out. You all have heard the commentary from Assistant Tenda. Plus the pleasure of the floor.
I move that we accept the calendar changes and the minute changes as proposed.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Mira Belk and seconded by Ms. Norton McGasket. All those who are in favor, say yes.
Aye.
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 All those who oppose, nay. Ayes have it. I want to make a few comments just before we ask for the, the motion to the floor.
May I ask a question or two before we adjourn after you make your comment?
Yes.
Or before whichever. I wanted to ask, Ms. Dr. E. Moyn. I had, that was concern. You mentioned something about the virtual parent-teacher conference. That would be just for the purpose of making up those minutes at that particular school?
It would, it would actually be, that piece would be for everyone. And that's, that's partially to make up some minutes, but also we, we believe that in the COVID environment, it would just be better served, everyone would be better served for either doing a Zoom, a phone call, or something of that nature.
Thank you so much for that because there were some concerns from some of the teachers. I know at Natchez Central and some other teachers because of underlying conditions that, that I'm sure I'd be so very thankful that, that virtual and Zoom will be available for the parent-teacher conferences.
Yes, ma'am, and that's an excellent point to make. We, today we were getting our numbers for who wants a vaccine. I would like to take this opportunity. It's a personal health concern for each individual if they're going to take the vaccine or not. But I want to strongly encourage everyone to take advantage of that. I also will tell you that I will do it publicly. I, I am very much in favor of it and, and all the safeguards are in place. But that is something that I think will, will totally change how we're operating in this environment because people will be able to go to work with a sense of relief and they'll be able to operate safely and protect our students even more so by taking that shot or those two shots rather.
Okay. And the other question was, there was a concern too. A parent I spoke to prior to the meeting today had indicated to me that she had children at the 10 Weaver and East Natchez Elementary, that they, they were no longer checking the children temp before they entered, entered the school on mornings. And I don't know, since that's been going on for a while and we could check that out and make sure that they are constantly checking the students before they enter the school because COVID is still running rampant.
Yes, ma'am, I can definitely check on that. But I will tell you that it, it's an automatic check because that, those cameras automatically check and have it along. They have silent alarms to the iPads when they, when they do not register a temperature that's, that's safe. But I can definitely make sure that those principals are aware that, that, that people are thinking that and they need to make their folks aware that they are indeed checking those temperatures. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you so very much.
Again, I want to say that you may hear me say things like, are you ready for the question? That's because I've been used to leading, chairing different places or as a leader of congregation. I'll say that and when I say, are you ready for the question, I'm just acting like you're ready to vote. And say yea or nay. Yea or nay, really ready to vote or not. And pleasure of the floor and things like that. I, I do use a whole lot of parliamentary lobbying on the debate team. But anyway, may seem a little etchy and sketchy right now, but I think we'll get used to one another. With that being said, with that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll offer.
And all for by Ms. Palmer, seconded by Ms. McQuire. In favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
How you doing?